The time is 7:10 and I would like to open the meeting of the Planning Commission of Richmond for July 5th, 2023. So, welcome everyone. It looks like we have four members and we have the Beals as guests. So, welcome everybody. Our first item is to review the agenda and basically we have the same two items on our agenda that we had at our last meeting. To continue with the conversation about the village residential neighborhoods and the impact of S-100. And secondly, to talk about the area of the industrial commercial district around Exit 11 and the possibility of residential uses there. So, I don't see anyone else who would like to make a comment on anything not on the agenda. The Beals, I am assuming, will be here for our discussion of number six. So, with that, we'll proceed with the agenda as written. And we'll go to number four, which is the minutes of our June 21st meeting. Are there any comments, additions, corrections? Anything people want to say about the minutes of 6:21?
You look good to me.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. So, hearing no changes that people would like to make to those minutes, we will accept them into the record as written. Thank you. All right. So, we'll move on to item number five, which is listed on the agenda as S-100. An update, any update that we might have and the public outreach that we want to start doing for the village residential neighborhoods. So, Keith, do you have any new information on S-100? Has anybody given us any further summaries or?
No, just to be LCT one that I did post on the website underneath the Planning Commission meeting for tonight, that's there. That's a pretty good summary of everything that's going on. You know, they hit the high points on that. I think we discussed a little bit last, last meeting that the summer probably isn't the good time to be doing this, but I might be conflating that with the Transportation Committee issue. So, you've got to keep me straight on that regard. But to piggyback on that, it seems that, you know, it's going to be hard to get a lot of the public into a focus during the summer, to be honest with you. So, I don't know how, how confident we are that we'd be able to get a pretty good message out widely, so to speak. So, that, that would be open for discussion on how people think about that.
And no word from CCRPC? They don't have any?
No.
They're not going to do any seminars or anything on it or?
I'm not sure. Yeah, I haven't been, I haven't been queued in. I know that they've been mostly on vacation the last, last month or so, specifically Brian, to be honest with you, and that's, that's the person that I lean on for the most part. And yeah, that's, that's pretty much it at this point.
Any further information about a July 1st, 2023 deadline for incorporating the changes into the zoning or is it just a matter of the zoning administrator will use those changes as he or she interprets them, basically?
That's, that's pretty much how we handled it in the past with, with other mandates. You know, we, we do have a sort of a timeframe by which to update technical aspects of it. These mandates are what they are. They're mandates. We have to follow those, those zoning regulations as mandated and we take that on a case-by-case basis.
Hey, just a thought about that though, and I'm still struggling with all the aspects of S-100 here, but back to what you were saying before, Keith, is it seems like there's, there's just a lot going on with this and that if we want, I don't, you know, public support slash or at least compliance, you know, with a mandate, it seems like it would be good to schedule our, our outreach about it to a time when we think there'll be good attendance.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's something to be said about getting it going right now and then work the bugs out. You know, I, I, I have no problem with that. You know, at least we'd get it going. Kind of a, kind of a, kind of a person who likes to do that. If you want to give me direction, give me direction and I'll move forward on how you want to go with that. I think I don't want it to be throwing out information for the sake of throwing out information, but at the same time, it would get us to go through the machinations of putting all that information together and getting it out. So, I know that might sound a little bit, you know, opaque, but I am looking for direction from the committee.
Well, and I think, I mean, I'm, I'm on the same page with you on that, you know, because it will take a little while to to digest this all and put it in a form that, you know, we think people will find accessible. I guess I'm just making the case for not tying a ribbon around it in August, but waiting for September, you know, just so that we can. I don't want to have people, you know, complaining to us in September that they didn't, they, they didn't know what we were doing, you know, because we did it at the, at the point of the year when people are least likely to be paying attention.
What if, what if I went ahead and mocked up a draft and sent it to the board members and solicit comment in that regard, would that work?
What do you think, Virginia?
Well, I think it's important that the planning commissioners, if we're going to have a discussion about it, feel that they understand what it says. So, to me, that's the first step before we think that we're going to do outreach is that we are comfortable with talking about this information. So, the question that I had was, okay, are we waiting for further information to help us understand it? Or should we just set aside an hour, say, at one of our August meetings, just for us to talk about it and try to understand what it says and figure out what questions commissioners have and, you know, I'd hate to go out there and announce that we were going to talk about it with the public. I mean, public are welcome to come, of course, to any meeting. And commissioners are welcome to come, of course, to any meeting. But if we maybe had a discussion amongst ourselves and went through the items point by point, then we would feel better about bringing it up in September.
What about a workshop? We could schedule a workshop. I mean, that's pretty much a typical avenue by which to go. We could do a PowerPoint. I can do a PowerPoint on that. Or we could do it during a regular meeting.
Yeah, I mean, why don't we take an hour or something during a regular meeting and if you wanted to do a PowerPoint, that would be great or put together some way of understanding it, you know, and having it even just going through, we can go through the legislative councils piece by piece. I have noticed in there that there are a few things that are not specifically specific enough to be accurate for our needs, but it's pretty good and, you know, we could certainly start there and just talk about it amongst ourselves. Does that sound okay, Chris?
Yeah, well, it sounds good.
Okay, so we'll put that on maybe, you know, well, we'll see how the rest of our agenda goes tonight and then we can decide when we want to put that in.
Okay.
So, before we start applying it to any neighborhoods that are going to make the neighbors interested in what we're doing, let's just talk about it ourselves and make sure we understand what it's saying. So.
Yeah, I would agree. It would help if we owned it.
Yep. All right. So, we'll look at one of our next three meetings, two in August, one in July, to have a discussion amongst the commissioners, a little introduction, PowerPoint or whatever about the contents of S-100. Okay, any other comments on that agenda item? Okay, great. So, we'll move on to our agenda item number six, which is talking about the strategies for having residential uses in the industrial commercial area around Exit 11. And it seems to me that there are a couple of options, that there are three options. One is to take the residential lots, the four residential lots out of the northern part of the industrial commercial zone, out of the industrial commercial zone and put them in some other zone. The other zone would either likely be the AR or the HDR zone. This would be the easiest thing to do. There would be no changes to anything other than the map. And it would be fairly straightforward and simple. It has certain advantages. Keith, did you send out that memo that I wrote yesterday?
Yeah, I, I sent it out after I got your reply on what number six was.
Yeah, it's like at 5 o'clock, I sent out a memo, but everybody is a little delayed because of the holidays. So, basically, in that memo, it lays out these different choices that we have that were all the options that we had talked about and that we could think of. One was to take the lots out, put them in either the AR or the HDR. The second one was to add the use of dwelling, single family at a minimum or other residential uses into the whole IC district. And the other was to create a new district and call it an RC district, which would probably amount to the same thing as just adding residences into the commercial district, although you could play with the uses that you wanted and you could have development standards to protect the businesses or to protect the residences or, and, you know, in thinking about it, that's clearly would take a lot more time and thought. So, I did run this by Adam and he thought also that the simplest and quickest solution would be to take these lots out and soon after, we could talk about the whole complex issue of the commercial and the IC district up at Exit 11. There are many inconsistencies and difficulties there, but if we just take the lots out, we don't have to deal with any of those right now. We can just take them out, four lots, put them in to another district. So, how do people feel about that?
Love it. Would it be possible to find out what, what current zone we have that would be acceptable to residential and also compatible with, what is it, Blue Flame Gas or is it Patterson Fuel Tank there? Fuel tank storage? Because I'm pretty sure that's not allowed in the AR.
Well, we wouldn't take that lot out. We could leave that in the IC. If we want to, so there are eight lots in the northern section of the IC. I don't know if you want to show like a parcel viewer map, Keith. There are eight lots, four of them are residential. One belongs to the town or two belongs to the town, depending on whether you want to count it as one or two. And one belongs to Jay Hutchins. So, there are four commercial type lots and there are four residential lots. We could just take the four residential lots out and leave the other ones in. Patterson would stay in, Jay Hutchins would stay in, the recycling, which is the town lot, would stay in, and the swamp would stay in. Those are the four lots in that part of the IC district. So, I'm suggesting that we just take the residential lots out and leave the other ones in.
Can everybody see that?
I can't see it. I don't have any visuals.
I don't see anything either.
Who's on the phone?
Let me see if I can do it because I have, I have a picture of it, but host has disabled participant screen sharing.
Yeah, I'm going to continue to do that because I'm going to put it up on the screen right now.
Okay.
How about now?
Yep, that's good. We can see something. Okay, perfect. So, we're looking at these lots. Can you make it bigger by any chance or is that good enough? Oh, that's sweet. All right. So, the lots that would be taken out are RG-0300, that's a residential lot. RG-0226, that's residential. RG-0140, that's residential. And not, not that, and come over to the Thai-shaped one, which is RG-0090. Those four lots, we would take them out and we would put them in the, whatever, either the ADR, the AR or the HDR. It seems like are the only suitable lots to put those in.
So, the RG-0092, that's the Blue Flame lot?
That's the Blue Flame Storage Lot, that one. And the RG-0088 is the Jay Hutchins Lot down lower, down low. Yep, right there. That's Jay Hutchins. And then RG-0080 is the Swamp. And across Rogers Lane is the Recycling. So, there's either seven lots or eight lots, depending on whether you count that town lot, which is the swamp and the recycling area. If you count that as one lot, then there are seven lots, four of which are already residential. So, there's no reason why we can't do that. It's, you know, it does leave this one lot in between that is still IC, but, you know, look at that little NR-0151, which is a little commercial lot in the middle of the IC district. So, you know, people make these choices. The fact that it's a little unusual shape was one of the reasons that I kind of wanted to reform the whole area, but clearly that's going to take a lot more discussion. You know, Mark pointed out that that's going to have, will take a lot of time to discuss and has many complicated bits to it. So.
Well, I, I don't have it in front of me, but what is that? You were referring to the small plot coming off of the Mobile Home Park?
Yeah.
And what, what, what district is that in now?
That's in the Commercial District.
So, if that's a residential plot up there, does it make sense to add that to it? I guess we ought to check with the homeowner, but.
Well, yeah, I thought about that as a possibility, but there's a mobile home on it. So, if you want to protect the commercial nature of the Jay Hutchins Lot, it might make sense to not put that into a residential district because, you know, you could just take the mobile home off that and then it would make the Jay Hutchins Lot bigger. Can you point to that lot, NR-0151? Yeah. So, it's just got a mobile home on it. You could take the mobile home off and then it would just be more of a commercial piece, if you know what I mean. I, I'm okay with taking it out and making it residential, but that to me seemed different from the other residential pieces. I could go either way, I guess.
I, I agree that it's got at least a different potential. You know, at this point, we're talking about a fairly, you know, we're not, we're not getting geographic continuity here. So.
No, we are not. But, you know, the three lots to the left of your screen, 0300, 0226, 0140, those are all contiguous with each other at least. So, that's like a little neighborhood, right? The Donovan's Lot, RG-0090, already has the Donovan's House on it, which is not a mobile home. It's an extensive house, you know, with outbuildings and, you know, that's not going anywhere. And then the rest of their property, which is more suitable for residences than commercial uses most likely because it's hilly and, you know, there's a steepness to it and so, but the little mobile home, the three-acre mobile home lot, which is in the Commercial District in the Jay Hutchins Lot, I don't know. To me, that's kind of different.
Well, it's certainly an outlier.
Yeah, it's an outlier and it's accessed from the Mobile Home Park. It's kind of weird that it's not in the Mobile Home Park and maybe we'd want to add it to the Mobile Home Park, you know, rather than adding it like these other ones.
Is it owned by the Mobile Home Park or is it a?
No, it's owned by Judy Rosowski.
Okay.
But not inhabited by her there. She doesn't live there.
Okay.
She has a long-term tenant. It's very kind of wooded around it. But, you know, there's Jay Hutchins on the other side of it as well.
Surrounding it.
It's surrounding it, right. It's in the middle of the Jay Hutchins Lot. So, I don't think I would choose necessarily to put it in the AR.
I would leave it. I wouldn't touch it.
Yeah, and it's also coming out of the Commercial District. It's not coming out of the IC District, you know. I mean, it's something that I think when we do a consideration of the Commercial and the IC District as a whole, that is a lot that we can think about again. Does that make sense, Mark?
Yes.
All right.
So, all that would be required, and you can correct me if this is wrong, Keith, there's no text of the document, our zoning document, that would need to be changed if we did this. The only thing we would change is the map. We would take these four lots and we would color them in differently.
Yeah, I mean, you'd obviously have to have the update on the, on the front page of the RZR, you know, that just tells us what, what we did. But besides that, I, I believe you're correct.
And so, just by number, we would mention these four lots and we would say we were moving them. Now, the question is, where do we want to put them? What district do we want to put them in? Do we want to put them in the HDR or the AR? Both of those districts have permitted residential uses, single family and duplex. And then they have a number of conditional uses, some of which are commercial, like office space, museum, personal services. In fact, the only difference that I could find between the HDR and the AR in terms of uses is AR allows kennels and HDR does not. HDR allows multifamily and AR does not. Now, granted, we haven't looked at either of those two districts to see what changes we would make in them, but as of right now, those are the only differences. They all allow some commercial uses. There's some slight differences in the dimensional requirements, like the frontage in the AR, I think, is 100 feet and the HDR is 75 feet. Setback, I think, is a little bigger in the AR, 30 feet versus 20 feet in the HDR. Maximum coverage is 30% I think in AR and 40% in HDR, and there was one other one. Setback, frontage, coverage, that might be it. Anyway, so small differences. The lots themselves, the four lots that we would be moving are all pretty good-sized lots, you know, they're bigger than the minimum. The lot, minimum lot size is the same anyway. It's one acre in both the HDR and the AR. HDR, I think, says it can be two-thirds of an acre if it's served by water and sewer, which it wouldn't be here. So, it's a one-acre lot size, minimum lot size.
In the AR, yes.
In the AR and the HDR is the minimum one-acre lot size. I think they both allow PUDs or residential PUDs. I think it's
I believe that's correct.
Whatever it is, is the same in both of those two districts. So, so, I don't know. Keith, do you have an opinion about which would be more suitable somehow on some level?
If, if you look at the, if you look at the purpose of each of those districts in the RZR and the Richmond zoning regulations, you'll see that the HDR matches the purpose a little bit better than the AR. This is more of a walkable area than you'd see on Kenyon Road or Huntington Road or something along those lines. It's not saying that it's incredibly walkable, but it is more so. So, that's where I would be leaning more towards the HDR designation than the AR designation. Basically, because it's, it's more compatible with commercial than the AR is. That's my take.
And the AR also, because of the fact that it's called the agricultural residential, is more suggestive of farmland in the vicinity. I mean,
If you read, read the purposes of each of the districts, you'll see what I'm talking about and, you know, the AR is, they want to preserve vistas and, and, you know, scenery and, and open land. Whereas in the HDR, it's more focused towards, you know, a community-type center. And I think this has the potential for that. I mean, it's already there. Food for thought.
Anybody else want to have a comment about that? Okay, well, let's back up one step and see what each of the four members who are here today would want to say about taking the four lots out of the IC District. Chris?
Well, I guess it makes sense. You know, it's not, like I was saying before, it's not geographically elegant, you know, but it recognizes, you know, the current use of those parcels and, you know, eliminates, you know, future difficulties, you know, with, you know, adding new structures, that kind of stuff. Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm supporting it.
Okay. How about you, Mark?
Yep.
Okay, you would support that. And Adam, what about you?
Oh, yeah, I would support that. I think that seems like a reasonable course of action.
Yeah, and, you know, we will need to revisit the commercial and the industrial commercial areas at some point in the not-too-distant future. But for a start, this doesn't make any difference to them. So, all right.
If, if I could add just one more comment, you know, I, I'm a little bit, not unnerved, but not, not wickedly happy about RG-0092 separating RG-0090, i.e. the Blue Flame parcel. We could potentially bifurcate that where you keep on the south side of the stream, as I see, and to the north, we can make that portion of the parcel HDR or whatever way that the board wishes to go. One example, as I looked here, was, I don't know if you folks at home can see this, but you see this parcel down here off of Kenyon is bifurcated between AR and industrial commercial right through here. So, it's not uncommon in the town to see this. We're in zoning in general. So, that's a thought. I don't think that Blue Flame is going to be placing any, any more storage containers up here on the slope, but it would be developable. In fact, that is going to be the access for the back of this lot that we're, we're considering here. So, just want to throw that out there is, is we don't necessarily need to, you know, remove or, or remove 090 from this discussion as far as it being contiguous. That's the thought.
So, that seems fine to me. I mean, I've always wondered why that Kenyon Road parcel, why the IC. Why the IC designation. Was split, like most of it is in the far, is in the Conans farmland. And that tiny little bit or a third of KR zero eight five four is the only part of it. That's in the Eden sand and gravel lot, but anyway.
That's all proximity to the interstate.
Yeah. And it is active, that is an active parcel. I was by there, uh, last week and we're definitely taking a sand out of there.
And so what would be the advantage of splitting uh, RG zero zero nine two? In that way, I mean, we're, I mean, actually remind me here now, the access to RG zero zero nine zero is actually from. Rogers Lane kind of through that.
That's correct.
And so it'd be keeping that part or putting that part rather in residential, which would that help to preserve that access? Potentially?
Well, I think we'd have to have, uh, Michelle talk about, um, where the access is. I believe it's, it starts off of, uh, zero one forty. And then comes through zero zero nine two and then ends up at zero nine zero. Um, but I think we need a little bit more information on that.
So, Michelle, can you tell us about the access? Does it cross? It starts at Rogers Lane presumably crosses zero one four zero and then zero zero nine two to get all the way over to your parents' lot. Is that correct?
Yeah, it, um, it's basically kind of at the spot, at the very bottom of RG zero one four zero. Like right where all of those lots come together now, uh, yeah, right there. It, it kind of starts there and then if you, if you really follow the line to the right, it kind of goes in, in that way. No, um, go back to where you were. Are you talking about where we would build or where my parents driveway is?
Where, no, where you, where your access to the property would be.
Yeah, Keith wasn't going in the right direction then. Um, because it, it would cross uh, RG zero one four zero and it would also cross. RG zero zero nine two, um, sort of where the um, stream goes through. And then it would go out in the far backside of RG zero zero nine zero.
And have you discussed this with these two lot, these two parcels that it would cross? Whether an easement is obtainable or?
Um, an easement already is signed, um, it's just dated from two thousand eighteen. So we would need to like probably have a, a new easement signed, I'm assuming. Um, but yes, that both of those plot owners are aware of our, our intentions.
Yeah, this, this would most likely end up at the DRB, um, for slopes. And, and obviously the subdivision, so.
Yep.
Yeah, well, I mean, I can see the appeal of making the northern half. Of zero zero nine two, the Patterson where their fuel tanks are. Residential, because that joins those neighborhoods together, you know, I mean, it joins the three existing residences. Donovan's house and your house, Michelle and Zach, you know, it makes it. Continuous, continuous there. So I think we would have to have a conversation with Patterson to see if they cared that we, you know, we're not. We would be putting them into a different zone, so they would have to be okay with that. Not having so many commercial uses. There are some commercial uses.
And, and just thinking ahead a little bit, I don't, I haven't looked at the trends recently, but I know that sales of propane. Were decreasing um, in Vermont, at least at one point. It's certainly, um. The, it continued decreases would be part of, I think, stated state policy towards um, reduction in greenhouse gas emissions. And towards electrification, so at some point it's possible that um, that parcel might go up for sale. And the question is, is, you know, what, what do we see um, wanting to happen with it? And it's surrounded by residential essentially at this point.
In, in a floodplain, no less.
In a floodplain, no less.
Um, okay, so.
Yeah, but in, is in the back of that law out of the floodplain?
Yes, yes, it is.
So, uh, we should probably ask the owners to see if they consider if they're interested in turning that into a residential.
Yeah, we could certainly do that.
Well, we certainly would want their buy-in, that's for sure.
So, if that were acceptable to the people who have the tanks there. Would, is that the way you commissioners would wish to see it go to bifurcate that? And make the upper portion of it. In the same district as those residential lots?
Well, that would be them, right?
That would be what?
Uh, that would be up to the owners, right?
Yes, ultimately, yeah.
Well, no, I mean, so what we would do is, is it Blue Flame Gas that owns, owns those tanks? Anyway, we would have to contact them and say, do you have any issues with us? Putting half of your property into a different district from the IC district. So it would change the uses that you're allowed. You would be allowed residential uses. And you would be allowed some commercial uses, probably not putting more fuel tanks up there or.
Right, well, yeah, the only thing you'd probably put up there is a house. And I don't even know about that. It's that steep.
Yes, very steep.
But doesn't Michelle have to cross that? To get over there?
Say that again, Mark? I didn't catch that.
Don't the, uh, Beals have to cross that to get over there?
Yes.
They have an easement across it.
So they do have a, so, so the, the land must be flat enough to.
Well, the part that we walked, when Keith and I walked with the Beals and the Donovan's across there, where that stream is. We went a little bit north of that, as I recall, and it was pretty flat and forested right there.
Yeah, so, well, I'm just thinking it might benefit them to build a house there.
Yeah.
Seeing that we're, uh, you know, bracketing them out with residential and calling them, I don't know. Any kind of concern, there could be an upside for it if they want to subdivide that piece of that law. For the residents up there.
Yeah, so if they are, if, if they find that acceptable, that we subdivide that. Uh, no, we don't, we're not subdividing it, we're just putting that portion into a different district. Is that what we want to do? So, Mark, it sounds like you're saying that would be good from your point of view. If it were also put into this other district like the HDR, yes?
I, well, yeah, it depends on, uh, the landowner, but it seems like, uh, it might be a win for them.
Yeah, if they're agree, you know, if they're not in agreement with it and they really don't want it, then we'd have to back off from it, I think. Chris, what do you think about that?
Sorry, say that again?
So what do you think about making the northern part or the upper half of that? Lot where the tanks are, the propane tanks, putting that into the HDR along with these four residential lots? Would you be in agreement with that if the owner was fine with it?
But, but just the northern part, not the southern part, I'm looking at this orientation.
Well, the southern part, they have these tanks already, which is not a use that would be allowed into, in the HDR.
No, I, I think that makes sense.
Okay, so that's, uh, Mark and Chris. Uh, Adam, what do you think about that?
I think it makes sense if the owner's on board with it. Um, I don't see any drawback to do that.
All right, so I'm fine with that. So let's, um, we will contact the owner. And see how they feel about that. And if they're good with it, then let's include that in with the four lots. We will now have. Um, you know, four and a half lots in this HDR.
All right, let's, let's work through that. Zero three hundred, zero two two six, zero one forty. Portion of zero nine two and RG zero nine zero would be, would compromise the change. I don't see anything else changing.
Right.
Okay.
And um, in terms of whether they go into the HDR or the AR. How do people feel about that? Chris, how do you feel about that?
Let me think about it.
Adam, how do you feel about that while he's thinking? Or do you want to think out loud, Chris? Sorry.
No, I want to, I want other people to go first.
Okay, Adam, how do you feel about that?
I guess I'm, I'm not, I guess I don't have a strong opinion one way or the other. I don't, I'm, I'm not really. Uh, I haven't, hadn't really thought about which would be advantageous for whatever reason, so. Yeah, I guess I don't have a strong opinion about that right now.
Okay, Mark, how about you?
Um, I'm, I'm leaning towards the HDR with, you know, at, at first take. Because, uh, you know, you're right near the mobile home park. You already have, uh, you know, a, a population center. You know, that's kind of dense, you know, if you get a couple more houses out there, if it's going to be residential, it's, it's not like it's the back. The backwoods of, uh, Kenyon Road or something, it's. It's, it's right off, uh, River Road and, uh. And it, you know, if we're going to try and promote, uh, public service out, out that way as far as public transportation and that kind of thing. Um, you know, having a couple extra houses out there seems reasonable. I don't know what the neighbors are going to say about it. They may say, no, we don't want to have anybody else or. Making it any more dense, but, you know, my first take is, uh, HDR pending the, uh, uh, property owners.
Okay, and I am fine with that. I also don't see too much difference between the AR and the HDR, but I can see, you know, as. When Keith has pointed out, the purpose statements of the district, it does seem to fit a little bit more with the HDR. So. Chris?
HDR.
Okay, good.
It's settled.
Uh, great, excellent. All right, so. I would say that we have a consensus at this moment. And that we are going to go in one of two different directions. Either we will put four lots. Or we will put four and a half lots. Into the HDR and take them out of the IC. And we are, if we're agreed on that. I don't know if we want to set up a public hearing yet, date. Probably should find out about the propane tank people.
Yeah, I've got some research to do. I'm going to want to, uh, uh, get some draft mapping done. And, uh, uh, get some type of packet ready for that discussion, especially if we're going to have a couple more members join too. But, um, you know, this gives me direction. So I'm truly appreciative of that.
And Michelle and Zach, how do you feel about this proposal? Are they still here?
Yeah, sorry, I was trying to.
I lost you for a minute on my screen.
Yeah, no problem. Um, no, I mean, I, I think it's a fair compromise, um, and I'm just happy that we're making some progress.
Okay. All right, and so the other thing that we'll need to do is to. What we've done in the past when we've put parcels into different districts. Is, is we have notified the people who will be in a different district, specifically by letter. That they are going to be in a different district and that they should talk to us if they have any questions about it. So this would be, you know, your parents, the Donovan's, obviously they will be for it, they will, you know, but they'll get a letter. And then those other residences will be notified and those people will be specifically. Uh, invited to come by letter to the public hearing. And also, of course, the propane tank folks. Will be invited to come. They will know about it because we will have talked to them already about this question of separating part of their property. So. All right, great. And then at some future time, we'll talk about the whole rest of the area, so. Okay, so I think we have a way forward and Keith can do some initial mapping and stuff. And we'll contact the people we need to contact and. Get it rolling, so then we'll set up a public hearing for as soon as possible. All right, anybody else want to say anything else about that or are we? Moving on? Okay, hearing no other comments, we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is item seven, which is other. And the only other thing that I have, Keith, do you have anything other that you want to talk about? Is there any other pending thing that we need to be talking about?
Um, no, I think we're in pretty good shape.
Okay, you will notice that the RC districts have been, are now the official map. And the official RZR is all up on the website and everything correctly, so. I still wonder if the DRB wants to come in and have a seminar on it or not. But Keith, I don't know what you think about that.
Um, I think that, uh, when somebody starts to develop in these areas, that's when they'll become interested, to be honest with you. Um, they're aware of it, they've gotten the new updates, they've, they've been, they've been informed. Um, they're just not overly engaged, to be honest with you, so. And I think that that is by, by design.
Okay.
So Tyler is aware of it and, you know, he's the one that would be referring, referring all those, uh, development to them.
Oh, and one last thing that I wanted to mention about exit eleven. Before we got off the subject was we will need an amendment, a bylaw amendment report. So Keith, you're going to work on that, right? It just answers those three questions. You know, it's not going to have.
Yeah, I mean, there's a certain, there's a certain guide that I follow by statute, you know, you've got to, got to hit all those points.
We've, uh, we've done that for the other district changes that we've made. So it doesn't have to be too long, but we'll, we'll look at that hopefully at our next meeting when we have these other items resolved. Okay, so the only other thing I have is polling of the members to see if they are coming to our July nineteenth meeting. So.
I will be here.
Chris, thank you very much. Adam, hopefully no sick children then, but. Are you coming to our next meeting?
Uh, yeah, I will be at the next meeting, but, but yeah, unfortunately, the children, the children are no longer sick. They've just, uh, passed the torch on to me, so.
Oh, sweet, okay, well, thank you for coming. You've made it all possible.
Feeling, feeling much better now, so.
Oh, good. Uh, Mark, are you coming to our next meeting, hopefully pending anything else, whatever?
Um, pending another crappy workday like today, yeah.
Well, thanks for coming anyway. You have also made this possible, our progress that we've made. Um, and who else? Me, I will come. Yeah, and I, I'll talk to Allison and make sure since she was reappointed that she comes. I know she will tell me there's too much swimming, but I'm going to tell her that she has to come anyway. So.
I was expecting her to call in a little late.
Yeah.
That's what I was hoping for.
Yeah. Oh, well, I'll, I'll have a chat with her, so, anyway.
I will, I will, I will state that, um, I cannot make the meeting. I'm just playing when I say that. Um, but I am planning to take a vacation in August and I'll keep you apprised of what those dates are. I mean, it's hard for me to break away for a solid week because I have every other week. I have either you or the Transportation Committee, so.
Yeah, or the Housing Committee, which is. Struggling to meet, yep. Well, thank you for being here and we will talk on the nineteenth. We will see you on the nineteenth, so.
Yes, you will.
Great, all right. Well, thanks everyone for coming after the holiday. And as Mark requested, it's a short meeting, so.
That's awesome, thank you.
Yep, great, so.
And sorry, sorry I was such late notice to tell you I wouldn't be able to make it and the delays in getting on.
No problem, no problem. We got there. So, so we will accept Chris's motion at this point.
I move we adjourn.
Is there a second to that? And is there anyone who is opposed? There is no one who is opposed, so at eight five, which is some kind of record.
Must be.
We are adjourned and we'll see you all on the nineteenth.